I'd like to join me in doing a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Hopefully, the applicant representation will show.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question back from a technical standpoint. If there's no applicant representation, do we still hear the issue? Is that what?
What I would recommend, and this is just a recommendation, because we, the last meeting, we had no quorum, and they showed up, that if it's possible to move forward with the item, and then if the planning commission is not comfortable, they could always table or defer.
Well, I have questions I want to ask them.
Okay.
And we're not allowed to do that. That's my only. And after we move forward, that's what my comments.
All right. Let's wait until we get that point on the agenda, and then we'll discuss how to proceed, just to keep us moving forward. All right. Boy has been published, approved of the minutes, June 6th. Are there any comments, corrections, additions, deletions?
I'll vote two.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second it.
Approved, seconded.
I'm voting yes.
Okay. I'll vote in favor.
I thought you were handling a taxi.
All right.
Vote.
It's an interesting crowd tonight, I think. This move must be out all time. All right. Any comments?
We have all kinds of issues today.
I don't think there's any.
What a day. Let's put this down.
Oh, what, there was anybody online?
That's the last week's meeting.
All right. The zoning map amendment we're here to consider is a rezoning request for 4.25 acres at 175 40 Island Road. They all have your documents in front of you. We do not have a representative agent from them. Do you wish to, as a board, proceed with this issue in discussion with staff? Or did you want to wait until the agent representation can be here? How did you, any comments, or how does the commissioner feel?
I think we should wait till the agent is present to do questions.
I agree. Even asking questions to staff.
Yeah.
So guys, on existing zoning, so I saw this at home, so the visual, why is that little tiny piece in proposed still T2 rural?
Oh, here we go. We have it now.
There he is.
He's up.
Oh, okay.
You're up.
All right. Now, thanks, Josh. We were just about to take a vote on whether or not we're going to table the issue to your next meeting, but we're at the start of it, so let me ask the staff, if you'd come forward with your discussion piece.
Well, good evening, Chairman, members of the planning commission. This item before you is a property owner-initiated map amendment to our community development code map. The current, this is, the property size is approximately 4.25 acres, and this is located on the south side of US 278, close to the intersection with Graves Road. There's currently two automobile dealerships there. I believe one is Mercedes, if somebody can correct me. I believe there's two, but I can't remember which one is which. So there's an existing area that is zoned C5 regional center mixed use, and, okay, there it is on the map. This property abuts that area, but it's right now zoned T2 rural, and that is kind of a remnant of this whole area. These properties, the Graves property and Pepper Hall, were originally zoned rural, and one by one, they have come in for zoning amendments that have been granted. This is kind of a remnant that is remaining between that existing area and the Berkeley Hall PUD. So that's the area that's outlined in red. What the applicant is proposing is to rezone this to C5 regional center mixed use to match the adjoining district, and they have expressed to staff that they are interested in simply having more land for the dealership to have, I believe, like a building for detailing, for, is it for repair?
Just expanded service.
Okay. So the intent of the property owner is to sell it to the adjoining property owner, the car dealership, to be additional support. This is a drone shot of the property, so you can see the two dealerships in the background that this would adjoin. The green in the foreground closest to the bottom of the screen is part of the Berkeley Hall PUD, and you can see, I believe that that is the, that's Berkeley Hall, their maintenance area. You see two curb cuts, which are the two parcels that are still zoned T2 rural, and then you have the Mercedes dealership over here. Here's another view. So one way of looking at this, this area behind it, where all those trees are, and then as you go toward Hilton Head Island, all of that is within the Berkeley Hall PUD. So, you know, this area, if the C5 regional center mixed use were expanded to this area, there's no more room for expansion, you know, once it fills out. So, you know, one of the concerns would be that we're simply allowing more commercial properties along there to be zoned C5 and Werwood End. There's very much, you know, that area is very much contained by the Berkeley Hall PUD. The other consideration is that the owner is selling this to the dealership, or that's the intent. One of the things that we could recommend, you know, if we're concerned about traffic impacts, is this being adjoined to the property and not having a separate curb cut. And I think that part of the concern would be, you know, additional curb cut on 278 definitely would, you know, contribute to additional traffic along there and friction along 278. So as far as staff recommendation, but those are just some considerations. It's really kind of, you know, there's really no room for commercial expansion other than this property, you know, in that direction. The other thing to consider is the comprehensive plan has this area zoned C4, or it's zoned community commercial, and the district that would appropriately implement that is C4 community center mixed use. However, the, that has been in place, that when those properties have rezones, the other dealerships, they rezoned to C5. In addition to the front portion of Pepper Hall, which is on the other side of Graves Road, that's in C5 as well. So this, while this is not technically, you know, consistent with the adjoining zoning, it is very close, and it is, I mean, it's consistent with the zoning, but it's not 100% consistent with the future land use map in the comprehensive plan. But it's still a C4, or I mean, it's a, it supports commercial, but not to the extent of the C5. But as far as staff, you know, we don't believe that tapering this one property down to C4, you know, really makes any sense in this location. It doesn't accomplish, we already have a regional commercial center established. It doesn't make sense to taper it down for a more community or neighborhood scale shopping center because of its location. It's not really serving that kind of community. And it's the owner's intent to expand the dealership that joins the property. Can I apologize? I hope I explained that clearly, and I'm willing to.
So what is your stand? What is your stand? I was a little confused there.
Our stance is that we support it, recognizing that it does not fully implement the comprehensive plan, but is very close, and because of the, being consistent with the neighboring zoning of the property, that we would support this rezoning.
The little piece of property that's left, the T2R, next to the one that would be changed to C5R CMU, is that to remain T2R?
Well, based on this amendment, this is being petitioned by the property owner, so we have not reached out to that other smaller property. There's an existing house on that property.
So you, are you saying, or you anticipate that that piece of property might get rezoned too, or does that have to be a fine request?
Have we not already ruled on that piece of property and turned it down at one point years ago?
Yeah, that's, yes.
Yes. This has come before the planning commission before.
Yep.
Now, based on our, in our ordinance, when somebody comes forward with a rezoning, then there is a stay on any action within a year after that. It has been much longer than a year since they came.
Yeah, February 2019. It was the exact same request we have tonight, only, and only it was presented by a neighbor, I think, and there wasn't a proposal from the dealership.
Yes.
So that's the distinction tonight.
So one of the recommendations that we believe makes a difference at the staff level is that if this is part of the dealership, and it does not going to require any additional curb cut, we do not believe that this is going to be a major impact on that road. It's not going to really contribute to additional friction. It's just they're expanding their operations and having an additional building. And I believe that one way that we could, you know, if the planning commission has concerns about that, is to make a condition, the recommendation, that they combine this property with the dealership, because that would, you know.
In other words, there's no additional ingress egress.
So if they sold, they couldn't sell it to the next door neighbor at that point?
Yeah.
Well, that makes a lot of sense, and Pepper Hall is going to have a new traffic light, new ingress egress across, and it's right around the corner from, you know, Buckwalter Parkway, and traffic comes zooming out that way. That would be a real danger to have another ingress egress point, in my opinion.
But to kind of answer your question, yes, it has been here before, and we believe that that one distinction, that that makes it different than the last application.
Gotcha.
It is the expansion of the dealership.
Yeah. Rob is bringing up a good point. The, if you remember, what flipped the vote the last time was when I asked the owner, "Why are you doing this?", and she said, "Oh, I want to sell it for more money." Well, we don't rezone for more money on either side. It's just not reason why you rezone a piece of property. So there was absolutely no benefit to anybody. I even asked, "Did you talk to the Honda guy? Does he want it?", and they said, "No, I haven't talked to him." Not a bad idea, right? He's right next door. But all that aside, I guess, I'm.
That's what, it was Mercedes, Honda.
It was Honda, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the Mercedes is on the other side, the Honda is right there. Okay. So a couple of questions here. Is this under a conditional contract for sale right now? Conditional on the zoning change? Okay. And did the applicant ask for a C5 or ask for C4? What is the Honda and the Mercedes, C5?
It's C5.
Okay.
And the distinction, you know, car dealerships are not a permitted use in C4.
Okay.
So that.
Yeah, it makes sense. Makes sense. So the next question is, what are we going to do with the house that's there? Because there is a house there, and the last time this came up, I remember my dear friend, Mitch Mitchell, went there, and there was somebody living in the house. Now, I don't know if they still are, but it's vacant now.
Do we want, do we want Mr. Tiller to come on up and, because the question is going to perhaps be better answered by him? Any other questions for Mr. Merchant?
Just a point of clarification, Rob. Could you go back to the last slide that showed the aerial view, the aerial view and all of the land behind? So in the documentation, so it's trees behind. Is that there?
Yes.
Or that's the line. So all, so I see that kind of snakey line, which looks like the limit of residential housing in Berkeley Hall. Is that right?
Yeah.
So then all the trees behind that, and then from our point of view to the right, looks like a bunch of trees, and is that also Berkeley Hall, or is that something else?
And that's all part of their open space.
Okay, so that's.
P O A.
Got. So what we're talking about is not going to impact the trees on others that we see here?
Not only in what's the yellow.
Right. Correct. I mean, not.
The rear portion of the site has wetlands.
Mostly wetlands, isn't it, back there?
No, that's great. That's really the elements. No, thank you.
Yeah. I want to get back to that house, though, because we don't want to end up here at the end of the day with, "Yeah, well, we're going to use it for the car dealership, but the guy that washes the cars is going to live in the house." You know, the house is coming down, right? Is that, is that part of the plan?
On this property, that, I mean, that's.
Let's have Mr. Tiller come up.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sure.
Any other questions for Rod? We'll call you back, so don't go away. Thank you.
Good.
Yes, Mr. Tiller, you got to come up. Did you have some comments you'd like to offer before we ask you our questions?
I could go straight into questions.
All right.
That's helpful.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess my question is about that existing house on there. What's the plans for that? How does that fit into the plan?
There is an existing house. It's vacant, and based on my understanding, that owner has deceased, it's now gone to the, to the kids, and they live out of state, so they're interested in selling. And that's, that's when, I believe, they approached the Honda dealership. So it's a, technically, it's a different applicant from the one in 2019. It's the same.
Oh, it's not, I think Mrs. Lewis or something it was, or Laura Lewis.
I thought the guy rented it. Didn't he rent from her? That's what I thought.
Well, there's no one living in it now.
So that, he has not included in ours? Yeah. Yeah, I believe it was a tenant, if I'm not mistaken, okay? But I guess the question is, is, forget about Mrs. Lewis, she's going to soon be gone out of the picture. What about the Honda dealer? What does he plan on doing with that house?
You're talking about the house on the site?
Yeah.
They're going to raise the house.
Going to take it out of there?
Correct. What they, what's happened is they've, they've hit the capacity for their current service center, and this is just an addition to that service center.
Oh, I mean, it makes sense if that had been the case the last time, this thought would have went through probably, but.
Yeah, they don't plan on selling cars out of this facility. Their plan is to service cars.
Yeah, I think the thing about the no cut is important, too, because that's a rough, that's rough getting it out of there now with the big cut that they have going in there. So I think that's, that's important. Okay, I'm finished.
Yeah, and the site, as far as protecting the resident to the east, there's a 50-foot buffer that'll be required, and then to the north, we've got a large wetland that occupies a little over half the site. We're buffered off that as well. So in addition to the vast, I guess, open space, treat area that's part of Berkeley Hall, roughly half of our site will remain vegetated and protected on that backside in addition to the buffers to the east and the buffer on 278.
Which is how much?
I don't believe there's a buffer there at all.
Yeah, the buffer on 278 will be how much?
50 feet.
50 is all?
Yeah.
Are they allowed to put signs up there?
I don't think they're going to need one.
Well, not my question.
But it's, I mean, it could be, they could apply for a sign.
If you look at it, it's not like a 50-foot buffer that's filled with trees. It's all open spaces. You can see the house in there. You know, it's, it's a buffer, but it's, maybe they'll plant some trees or something.
Are you allowed to plant a sign in the buffer, are you not? Are you not allowed to apply for a sign in a buffer?
I guess what I'm not, I'm not sure if this were combined with the other property, whether it warrants another sign, you know, whether it would be allowed to have another monument sign in the buffer. Typically, we do allow monument signs in the buffer that are 10 feet back from the right-of-way line. You know, and the other thing is if this buffer is not, if it's open, when this develops, they're going to have to plant back. I mean, there's a certain prescription of overstory, understory, and shrubs, you know, at 50 feet, so that's something will be addressed if the property is developed.
That's your drawing, right?
Yes.
So that's the way you see it? So there is no curb cut on 278? The connection is between the dealership and the facility itself?
Yeah, and they're happy if we need to create an exempt plat, remove that property line, they're happy to do that.
So that's what, that's what staff was talking about, basically. You're okay with that? Yeah. My only comment, and I'm all right with what you're asking for and what the staff recommended, there's so many dealerships along there and along the buffers that park in that buffer to display their cars. Hundreds and hundreds of them. Must they keep them from doing the same thing? I'd like to see another caveat there.
Are they allowed to do that?
No, they're not, and it comes down to code enforcement. So, you know, just as an example, this, the Mercedes dealership is, they're proposing to expand closer to Graves Road, and we're requiring them, you know, to plant that buffer, but to also revisit the remaining buffer that was planted maybe 10 years ago, because if there are vehicles put in there, then some of those shrubs and, you know, that were, they have been done.
Every dealer does it.
So, yeah, we know, and it's very difficult.
But I haven't seen it here, because they've got, there's a hard edge there with that parking, and I haven't seen them push cars in yet.
I've seen it in Hardyville for sure.
Sure there. Sure there.
Yeah, man, I got the picture up here. It's pretty clean.
The rest of the county land?
And I'm not saying that whether they're doing it here or not, I'm just saying that that's.
Even go down to the Honda side.
When we look at, you know, if they come forward with development, you know, for development permit, we'll look at those types of issues as well.
We don't get, we don't get a shot to ask that question. Can we ask that no cars be parked in the buffer as part of approval?
It's currently the law, so regardless of.
Who's holding the law?
It's up to code enforcement.
I'm not, I'm not the law.
Code enforcement.
And depending on the dealership, sometimes, you know, it's.
So you know about it, but you look the other way, so how?
We don't look the other way. It's just very hard to, it's very hard to enforce.
How?
It doesn't take long to move a car.
I just, I haven't seen this dealership do that.
I agree.
I haven't either.
Well, in the, in the field, in the field to the west, I've seen it.
Oh, the Mercedes.
Yeah, yeah. I've seen that.
I know dealerships that would like to do that today. They just don't have the cars to put in the buffer. They just don't have the cars to put in the buffer.
Maybe that's our, that'll solve the problem.
Have you seen O.C. Welch's Lot lately?
Any other questions, please?
I have a question. I don't, I'm not sure this is to Rob or you, Mr. Tiller. The cutout of the T2R on our documentation here, is that separately plotted?
It's a separate parcel that they're not, that's not part of.
Yes, but it's plotted on them.
Correct.
So as we've talked before, having the current Honda experience be blended with the, the proposed as one parcel, did I hear that correctly? That that might be an option? Was that correct?
With this? Correct.
In proposed zoning, so that these two parcels that are in our, well, not here, but in our papers here. And the only thing that is going to be left entirely T2R is where the soon-to-be-raised house is.
So done.
No, no.
No, that's a house, a separate house.
That house will stay. That's a separate parcel, and that's not under, not part of this application. There's two houses out there. There's one on this parcel that we're considering the rezoning. And then there's a neighboring parcel.
Right.
That's not part of this application.
So that's the neighboring is the cutout here, T2R?
That's correct.
Yeah, to the east, yeah.
I see. So that, thank you. So this T2R piece here, the neighboring, has nothing to do with the two parcels that we're talking about?
Correct.
Just like Mary Jones's property.
Correct. And we've got a 50-foot buffer there on the eastern end of this.
Right, you'll operate appropriately. And it's not up to us, I think Kevin mentioned this, to have Mrs. Jones, or whoever's the owner of the property say, "Yikes, you might get with, like, these folks." Right? That's not our role. We don't know.
And I believe they were approached, but I wasn't part of that conversation, but they, they weren't interested.
They had to be notified about this, so they have the right to come here. And, yea or nay? Right, so they've been notified?
Yes. They're aware.
That's my fault.
They're well aware.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask a question. Do you know if, is there anybody from Berkeley Hall that's approached you or approached the owner of that property in regard to this issue of rezoning?
I haven't.
No, is there anybody that's come forth?
No.
Yeah, I'm a little bit surprised by that.
But they've been notified, right?
Yeah.
They have been notified. You know, we were 500 feet from the rezoning. We have, I'm not aware that we've received any comments from the public. Juliana may have gotten some questions, you know, and spoke with some, some people who had questions because of the, you know, they got something in the mail. But we have not received any comments.
I don't want them to be surprised when suddenly they see all this construction going on and all these trees being removed, you know, just on their doorstep, just about. Okay, well, you know, if they're not, if there's no expressed concern, then I'm not going to make that an issue. Other, okay, anything else would you like to ask, Mr. Tiller?
No, I'm ready to make a motion. I'd just like to clarify them out. On the south side of the road, that little brown, what is all that grass? Between 278, there's a buffer, and then I'm seeing brown, is that clear space to park the cars to ship?
Those are pervious parking spaces.
That's parking.
On the north side of the buffer there?
Which, which again, is in line with what they have there now. On the bottom of the drawing, is that not the south? Where, where are we? And the north is up, no, the, the south part of the parcel, just south of the road that they're going to use to draw, drive the cars through.
Between the bushes.
Yeah.
You talk about that half cir, semicircle there.
Yes, what is that?
On this side.
That brown, where the cursor is right now?
I don't see a cursor.
Yeah.
Oh, it's over here.
Yeah, that's it.
Those are parking, that's parking. Yeah, and it's pervious, that's why it's.
And so that parking is used by, by whom? Customers or the dealer to show their cars? I'm back on that subject. And they have a legal right to display cars for sale?
Yeah, I don't anticipate they'll be storing new cars there. There'll be cars that are being staged for, that are getting serviced. They'll be storing them indoors, and then the employees will occupy those spaces.
Is there zoning on the number of cars that have in a dealership that services cars? I'm just going to step down. I get them out of order.
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Is there zoning on, like, there is everywhere else, for amount of cars that can be parked or have to be parked on a particular site? Is there?
They're going to have to, we have parking requirements based on the square footage of the building and the use. And so when this, if this were to move forward for development review, we would be applying those standards. And they're, you know, it's based, so there's a, I, we have not made those calculations yet. Right now, we, we view this plan as illustrative, you know, showing what the intent of the property owner is. But when they come forward to staff review team to get a development permit, we're going to be scrutinizing everything, you know, the setbacks, the number of parking spaces, you know. So we're not, by approval of this, we're not endorsing this layout. We're endorsing the, this is used as an illustration of how they're expanding the dealership to utilize this property.
And that parking's clear, the 50-foot?
Correct. It was, it's drawn to meet the standards of the ordinance. We're parked at one per 300 gross square feet. It's a 10,000-square-foot building. We've got roughly 34 spaces. And that's all within the setbacks. So we, we adhere to the 50-foot, 278 setback, the adjacent residential setback, which is also 50 feet, and then our commercial setback off the wetland to the rear.
That's what was my next question. So that is a setback?
Correct.
So you can't park back there?
No. You're in a buffer.
Okay.
This is wetland buffer.
Are we ready? Do you have another question?
No. I actually have one more question. Again, looking at the map here and looking at the road, 278, right where the, with the turn lane for the Mercedes Honda dealer starts is right on the borderline of this property. So this property presently, for that house that's there, has a curb cut. It's an existing curb cut. And it really has to go, because it's, it's an accident waiting to happen if, if you allow cars to start turning off 278 before that turn lane starts. So is, is that part of the, you know, can that be part of the conditions of this?
Yeah, we, they would abandon that existing curb cut.
The existing, okay. It's still going to have the one and the other lot, though, but, but nothing you can do about that.
Right.
Well, I think, I think Mr. Merchant said if we want to have a provision that there's no ingress or egress on 278 from this new property, then we could, we could specify that in our.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm actually more concerned that somebody says, "Hey, wait a second. Well, I said I wasn't going to put a new curb cut in, but I want to leave the one that's there there." Good point. That's what I'm concerned about. Because there is one there right now.
Well, we, we don't want any, is what you're saying?
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
Any more questions, Mr. Tiller?
Does that have to be part of the motion or no?
It does.
Okay. So who's making the motion?
All right, thank you, Mr. Tiller.
Thank you.
Thanks for your assistance.
Back up to us. Is there any final question that you, anybody wants to ask? Okay. Then if they're hearing none, are there any, would someone care to make a, a motion to approve the zoning amendment request? Yes.
Okay, on item seven, I make a motion that we approve the zoning map amendment rezoning request for 4.25 acres at 175 Forting Island Road. I'm not reading that long number. It's just C5 regional sensor mixed use. Agent Josh Tiller, owner Laura Lewis. In addition, that the existing curb cut be closed and no, no curb cut be allowed on the property after the zoning goes in.
Okay. All right, and we have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have you a second, Carol? All right.
Steph?
We have a second.
Discussion?
Yeah.
I thought, Kevin, you had a second condition, which was that, that the proposed lot that goes into, or the existing to propose would be consolidated into one lot. Isn't that what you mentioned earlier?
No, no, I didn't mention that. No. I'm, I'm okay if they do that, but that wasn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I just thought there were two conditions, not just the one.
Can we not? Can we talk about that?
Well, it's, it's open to discussion, the motion has been made, so go ahead.
Yeah, I thought that was one of the, going to be one of the conditions.
Just for some clarification, that is, that is a way that this can be given some teeth, is that counsel prior to a given third and final reading could, could require this, these two lots to be combined.
Yeah, exempt plat.
Okay, I'll amend the motion.
You want to restate the motion?
Yeah.
Just to be clear.
I'm not reading, I'm not reading the long number, though. Okay. So to restate the motion, I make a motion that we approve the zoning map amendment rezoning request for 4.25 acres at 175 Forting Island Road from T2 World to C5 Regional Mixed Use District. Included in the motion are the elimination of the existing driveway cut and no future driveway cut, and that the two lots be merged together into one property.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
You'll second that? All right, we have, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, state it. Raise your hand. Any opposed? Oh, it's unanimous. Thank you.
You don't want to hang around for the rest?
Oh, we're lots of fun, Josh.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Okay. We're up to text amendment to the Community Development Code on Section 51160 River Buffer to clarify the penalties for removing trees from the river buffer without appropriate permits. Yes, sir?
Yeah, so this, I think, will be a little bit more scary topic for everybody. So here we're talking about trees. This is kind of a continuation on some of the last text amendments that we had, and we kind of went into the tree ordinance section, kind of tightened up, and they give it some more teeth, and you all were very much in favor of that. You kind of gave us some direction to kind of bring those forward a little bit sooner than that. So this is kind of a continuation of that. So I just want to make it very clear that this section here, as anybody's reading this section, we're adding into river buffer, we currently have this language in section for penalties for tree removal without a permit in other areas. So we have that. This specifically is addressing when that occurs in a river buffer. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that distinction here with this section, what we're talking about here. So we're adding this in to clarify that. And this is Amanda, and she goes out there and she does this, so she's in there. And what I always say is, rules always have to come about for reasons. So there's a reason. So this essentially is providing teeth to, if somebody goes in in very high valuable land and wants to increase their view, and they go and they cut river buffer trees or any vegetation within that. And so if they did that prior to getting a permit, this is what would kick in, and this would be their penalty. The main component of what would separate what we currently have and what the river buffer standard would be, two main factors here. One, if you do it outside of a river buffer and you go and you cut a tree, you have to plant back 1.25 that amount. In this section, it's two times the amount, so the penalty is stiffer, because we thought the stakes were higher. So we went ahead and just created it and went from 1.25 to two times the amount. In addition to that, we made it very clear, if you look in the last sentence, that sometimes you could have somebody who goes and cuts it and says, "Great, what's my fee? What's my penalty?" Pay it. Like that view. So that last provision is, if they do go in and do it, not only do they have to plant back two times, they can't immediately just go and pay into the mitigation bank. They have to explore the opportunity of replanting on the site first, maximizing everything they can, and then whatever they can't fit, then they pay the penalty fee. So those are the two main components of what we have here, fairly a little different than the existing language in the code. So without taking any questions.
Questions?
Mine's more of a comment. I've been working with developers for almost 50 years now. And hitting them in the wallet doesn't hurt them. Stopping them for a period of time gets their attention. You say, "If you cut the trees down, then you have to stop for six months, or you have to stop for a year before you can proceed with your development." In addition to, and what, at what height and growth rate they have to replace a tree? One, two times inch per inch?
Yes.
So they can plant twice as many trees that are two inches instead of half as many trees that are four, which is what they should be, which will take twice as long to grow and get the, and get it back. Those are my comments. I think it's bogus. Developers don't care about the money. They'll pay, and they have paid. Remember, one, that we totally lost control of. Okay? And that's where, that's why I'm saying, if you have a penalty in there that will stop them for a period of time, then that gets their attention. That's my comment.
I, I have a comment also. Anything we can do to increase the enforcement of not, of protecting our environment, our trees, which are, aren't just the, for their beauty and their appearance, but for the health benefits that they provide in the absorption of carbon dioxide. We know that there have been violations, and I do agree that a violation to pay a few dollars into a reforestation fee is often looked at as doing, part of doing business, but let's cut down the trees. I think Sam's Point Road, there was a developer on that road that, that cleared the property. And that's what caused us to want to go and strengthen the ordinance, it's back about four years ago, if I remember.
278 also.
278 as well. So I, I absolutely think, you know, I don't know if this goes far enough, but I certainly like that it's moving in the right direction. This might be an old business brought up in the future. But a question I would ask you is that, why not include the same replacement standard for trees removed illegally? There's still illegally removed that are, aren't in the river buffer.[1617.83] There's still illegally removed that are, aren't in the river buffer. Why have a separate standard, how much you're gonna fine people because they, in both cases, they act wantingly illegally? And usually these, the ones who do that are ones who are national builders, and they certainly know the standards. So I would say, why not be two times also for illegally not in the river buffer, as opposed to, why the distinction?
Well, currently, the code's 1.25.
Yes.
So as a part of this discussion, if you like what staff has done with this, and the logic that we've applied to it, and you're saying, hey, we kind of like this formula, can you bring back that section in the tree ordinance and add, make in that too as well? Or adding similar language that you see here, we can revisit that, but that's in a separate section.
Okay, fair enough.
And we can also, going back to the stay on property, currently it's two years. If you want us to revisit that, we can bring that to you.
Speak to that again.
These are all discussions, or things that, if they're concerns, you just have to express those, we can go find where in the code they're at, and we can bring you solutions.
Yeah, I like, I like that.
I like that.
I mean, if it's a 40-inch oak, you can't replace that, I don't care how many trees you plant.
Not in our lifetime.
Huh? No. So that's why I'm saying, if you talk about teeth, we need teeth.
I know, we worked on that, this whole thing, real hard. I probably prepared it for six or eight months, and it had been, all kinds of people came in here and made comments. I know we did our best, but it's gotten even more serious.
Trees, rigging trees, it's tough. It's a tough thing, it's, you know, it's a moving target, you know, it's, you can cut a tree, grind a stump, and it's almost like it never existed if you didn't know about it.
I stop them. I don't see in here address the value of the tree, because if you've seen any of these bigger developments, it actually becomes like a lumber operation, all right? I saw one behind me, I actually have filmed it on my phone. They cut down all the trees and ran them through a machine, took all the, everything off of them, and then they put them on a big truck and they went off. The logs went one place, and they all got sold, whether it be the ones that are under a certain amount for paper, and the ones over a certain amount for lumber. Then they come along with another truck, they picked up every twig on the ground, that went into a chipper. Then they came with a big bat oak, and they pulled up every stump, pulled it up, up out of the ground, that went into the chipper. So I said, well, where were all those chips going? They go into a landfill? Oh, no, 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 no. No, they get sold to a power plant up in North Carolina, and they're sold to burn for electricity, to produce electricity, sold to kill them there. So the point I'm trying to make is, every single piece of speck of sawdust on that property is harvested into money for the developer. And so he, you know, oh, he's gotta plant a couple of trees, he's gotta do a little bit of this and that, but what about all the money that he gets from what he did? He should have to forfeit that to crime, right? I mean, cutting down the trees is against law, so he shouldn't be able to profit from...
To kind of get in, not, not always cutting trees is against the law. We need lumber.
Well, no, I'm talking about if you're cutting...
We need wood, we need products that are made from trees, that's very important, especially in this region. It's in the context of, how do you balance our need for the resource versus our need for the human habitation of that space through development? And Beaufort County's tree ordinance is pretty good, and if you compare it, and you look at a lot of other tree ordinance, so I think you all should be pretty proud of what you've got. What we're bringing you here tonight is something to make it better. We're not talking about those sections. If you all have ideas on some other things, we can take a look at it, but what we're bringing you here tonight is something that we currently don't have in the river buffer, regarding penalties, and then the plant back requirement, as a must prior to paying that fee.
Yeah, I wanted to just clarify, because what you're describing, Kevin, sounds like a forestry operation.
Yeah.
And the state is very clear that they do not allow local governments to regulate forestry. The only control we have, so if somebody is doing legitimate silviculture, forestry, and harvesting the trees, we have that waiting period. You can't do that and then immediately turn, turn around and get a development permit as a way to skirt our tree requirements. But, you know, that type of operation, I mean, that's...
It's regulated.
That's legitimate forestry.
By the state.
And we kind of have our, we can't even require buffers, you know, so...
There were houses there within four or five weeks of them doing, in other words, this was part of the process of building the house. The guy, the guy there told me, the guy in the back home told me.
Is this in Beaufort County's jurisdiction?
Yes.
Well, it could be that, I mean, on the other hand, the clearing that they were doing for that site may have been part of approved development plan, I can't, I can't see...
Oh, it was.
If it's part of an approved development plan, and it's already been reviewed, and the trees, you know, they could have, they just made very good efficient use of the trees they harvested.
No, no, I'm all with you, and this was an approved development, okay? What I'm talking about is the guy who doesn't get the permit, who doesn't have an approved development...
That's what we're talking about here.
That does this, yeah, but he's still selling all those trees and all that sawdust and everything else. He's selling everything.
So that's the part where I believe you brought up on what's that penalty? So that's what's called the stay on property. Currently, right now, in Beaufort County, it's two years.
And under what conditions and...
To go and just clear cut, just cut property, cut trees without, you know, a progress going through a proper, as a proper development...
Have we enforced that on anyone?
We do, actually, and, you know, because usually, I mean, a recent example, and Ed knows all about this, at the corner of Chester, or, I'm sorry, Calawasie Road...
Calawasie Drive and 170.
And 170, there's a very prominent piece of property that was clear cut, and we looked, we contacted the state, we looked at all the regulations, there was nothing we could do, but the one thing that they couldn't do is turn around and then propose to build something there, even if it was something allowed under the zoning ordinance, because that was sort of gaming the system. You remove the trees, and then all of a sudden you have a blank slate to develop. So that time period, that waiting period, is what, you know, provides a disincentive. That's something that we may want to revisit at a future day, is that whether two years is enough.
Yeah, so a lot of jurisdictions have five. So I mean, that's a little bit harder. A little bit harder.
There's also the question of, you know, being a, a community that's so eco-sensitive as we are, with a lot of, a lot of water marshlands and so on, I'm not sure a state, general state law suits us as well, when we're talking about removal of trees on the coast, and coastal properties, and the erosion that it creates, and et cetera. So it may, maybe that we petition for a little leeway in controlling some of the forestation that goes on in this county.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't...
We, I, there is not even... The state, the state is so tight on that south forestry, and there, what they get, the rights they get, the incentive from tree ordinance is, I think it's pretty solid.
We can blame it on coastal rising, and they can't do that in Midlands.
Well, they'll pretty soon have all the, they'll have all the trees they want, they'll be in the water.
Yeah, and I will say, one of the, one of the entities that's been out there logging has been the county on our rural critical lands, because there are forests out there that are unsustainable, they're, the trees are planted too close together, that, you know, they don't provide good habitat, it's a monoculture, and so, like on the property next to Maile and Bluff, we're gonna be, as soon as the road dries out enough, they'll be logging that area, part of it will be clear cut, because that forest just simply has no, no value, another area will be thinned out so that, you know, that could become more diverse and allow more, more room for the trees to grow. So not every, not every forest that you see from the side of the road is necessarily, you know, some of them are planted, and they're really not, you know, they're providing some habitat that, you know, they're not as valuable as, you know, maybe a mature forest, or maritime forest, you know, one that is, you know, has a diversity of species, and, you know, so that's just something to keep in mind as well.
Gotcha. Well, you've clearly challenged us to come up with some ideas that you're willing to visit, so I would ask, is, if you do have thoughts or ideas of things that you think we can do to strengthen the ordinances pertaining to protection of trees, by all means, you know, send them to me, and I'll forward them on, and...
Yeah, you seem quite knowledgeable.
And at an appropriate time, we'll discuss them.
Not just for us, but for other municipalities, I'd like to know what everybody else is doing.
Stay period, we'd be more than happy to do that at the staff level.
I'm sorry.
The stay, the stay requirement, like you're saying, hey, we would like you to, the staff, to look into that existing two-year stay requirement, I mean, outside of what we're talking about now.
Right.
But it came up as conversation, we can, you know, we can look into that and...
You mean provision of lengthening it or eliminating...
Yeah, what other municipalities have done, and what's the effect?
Increasing it over like two to five years.
I think this, this is a state, I think the state caps it at five.
I think five's the max.
So they give us a little bit of wiggle room to work within.
Let's do it all. Stop it dead in the water.
Make it so, say, stay in Star Trek.
Is that what you just did?
Yeah, they made it, made it in. Make it so. And on each day, it's...
Do we make a formal request, or how do we do this? Well, I don't, I don't think, I mean, we got it, we got it, you know what you want. And then we can, you know, just like we're bringing you text amendments now, right? A lot of this is a dynamic process, these conversations come off from these conversations of what we're bringing you. And so, just from this conversation, it's provided us with some direction, and we can bring that forward as a text amendment.
I'd love to see that.
Yeah, and I would, you know, I also made the point of the distinction you made between river buffer trees, and they're illegally done, and, and non-river buffer trees, which they have a much lower DBH requirement for, you know, 125 versus 2000.
So it also sounds like you're interested in us maybe looking at that 1.25, and if you like the language here of the two, maybe looking at that and making it two.
Yes.
Okay. Clarify between hardwood and pine.
Well, we, we have, in our ordinance, we have definitions for specimen trees, so we make a distinction between species and the size of a tree that define the specimen.
Very detailed.
If it's a specimen tree, it has to be mitigated inch per inch, and that's a big distinction. And so if it's a large tree, then that really starts to add up. If it is a non-specimen, then it's per tree, is my understanding. So we do take species into account, and then there are some species like Chinese tallow, mimosa, you know, some of these invasive species, that, you know, there's no requirement, you know, they...
They go.
Go to the island, after the town.
So in addition to all of this conversation, just so you know, these are, you know, all the things you're saying, we at staff level discuss all the time. In addition to going into the code, we're talking about fees, we're doing inches, staff is also currently looking at and working towards increasing what that mitigation fee is as well, so they get hit there as well.
Good.
Yeah, I would look, also look at Spring Island, they're very proactive about it. You cut down, take away everything that has to do with trees that are non-digenous, and then some, and you must take...
We can have three of the flaws in the world administering the code is what it comes down to. We have one staff member who has to take this all on and has other duties. So that's the reality of zoning administration, when you have millions of trees.
Yeah, you have, you have a new tool that brings that kind of information to you, though, the online access to, I think it's my Beaufort County or Beaufort, where you can take a picture of a violation that you see, or something that needs to be repaired, and instantly send it in. I don't know who gets those, but...
When it comes to tree cutting, we get calls. That's where people don't mess around.
Okay.
Call them.
All right, well, good, this has been a good conversation.
Where are we?
I mean, we're still on the language, I just defined the, the general dynamics of the language we have in the code, and the language we're trying to implement in the river buffer. If you have any questions of that, it seems like you all grasp that idea, but I can answer more than that.
Now, any further comments, questions? If not, can I have a motion to approve the amendment? Please?
I move that we approve the text amendment to the county, the Community Development Code, Section 5 dot 11 dot 60, to clarify penalties for removing trees from the river buffer without appropriate permits.
I second.
Who seconded it? Gail, seconded it? All right, any further discussion?
I thought we were gonna hold off on this and let you guys do some more work to fine tune. Did I miss that?
Yeah.
Or are we gonna vote on it, and then you...
Add to it.
Go and fine tune.
Yeah, we can add to it.
As a part of your discussion right now, it's my understanding you're okay with this language for this section.
Yes.
Through the conversation, it's been brought up for us to go look at other sections and bring those back to you, that's not this, but you like this here.
Yes.
That was my understanding of it.
Going to.
What about you, Ranoff?
Well, that could also be part of the other that we're talking about, is more teeth, that if we see...
The more teeth will just apply to it as well, it'll all kind of get wrapped.
Exactly, exactly. So that, so this is an improvement, but we're not 100% satisfied...
Right.
...with that a stay, at least I'm not.
I hear you.
Right, because the penalties will be under the tree ordinance part, right?
Yeah.
Whereas this is just the river.
This is located within the river buffer, where the other section will be under that one section, we have the current language, where we have the language on the stay, and all the other information for where the existing penalties exist, that's what we would bring forward next time.
I would also be interested to see how we compare with our language and the municipalities that are on the water.
They're all different.
Like left and right.
Hilton Head, I guess, Krebs, Sally Krebs was responsible for the, developing the tree ordinances for Hilton Head.
She's still there.
No, I don't think she's any longer.
No, I mean, there's, I mean, Beaufort County's got a really good code, I mean, it's got a good river buffer ordinance, you know, it's, it's there.
I just wanted, would like to compare, are we less than, more than...
Different.
...our same area that's on the river?
For river buffers, so I thought it was like when river buffers are in trouble.
I think it should always be our goal is to get a uniformity across the county.
Yeah.
But the municipalities have their own governance capability, just a matter of doing what's right by all the citizens.
Well, I would love for the municipalities, and I've lived in one for 20 years, to point the finger at us and say, look what they're doing, look at the results that they're having, because we're setting the example, that's where I am on that.
All right, I think we've had a second, and we've discussed it. May, all those in favor of the amendment proposed? Any objections? No, it's unanimous? Okay, thank you. Last item?
Can you play background music in between?
This is, this is amendment to, the text amendment to Community Development Code.
Okay, so this should be...
You want to read them?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize you were...
Well, I started to read it, but it's got so many tables and sections to it. Text amendment to Community Development Code, Table 3 dot 1 dot 6 O, Contollary Use Table in Section 3 dot 2 dot 100, 8 dot H, T4 HC, T4 VC, et cetera, to amend the maximum building size for general retail for the T4 Village Center at District.
Okay, yeah, and actually, the, the actual text amendment is a lot simpler than it even takes to read. Wanted to give just a little bit of background, and Cecily is probably familiar with this. Back in 2019 and going into 2020, we had a reconvening of the Coroner's Community Preservation Committee on St. Helens Island to take another look at the standards and some of the issues related to the Coroner's community. Some of the recommendations that came out of that, one specifically has to do with an ordinance change, and this deals with a zoning district that is only located in, in the center of that community. That's at the intersection of Highway 21, Sea Island Parkway, and Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and that, that's known as the Coroner's community. Some, I think the older term for that was Frogmore, based on the, the post office, but the term used on St. Helens Island is the Coroner's community. This district applies only to that area, and when we developed the Community Development Code, this is going back before 2014, when we were fine tuning that, we worked with the CP committee on this district called T4 Village Center, and took into account specific things that the community wanted to see in that district. The actual metrics are the same as the other T4 districts, T4 Hamlet Center and T4 Hamlet Center Open, but they have different use, different use requirements. So it makes it kind of custom fit for that community. Going through this more recent process in 2019, one of the recommendations from that CP committee was, as it exists, the district allows up to 50,000 square foot buildings, and the committee wanted to see that reduced to a maximum of 25,000. And so this is merely amending the table to cap the maximum size, and this is the, this square footage of, you know, retail, general retail buildings to 25,000 square feet.
Just general retail?
Yes, and I believe it should be in this table, other, like, office and services, those are already capped at 25,000. So it was general retail that originally, or currently allows it to go up to 50,000.
And we're bringing it back down?
Yes.
Rob, I think at the meeting, somebody said, oh, well, 25 is basically the size of the old Publix on Ladies Island, maybe that was a little bit bigger, maybe that was 36, but I remember some comparisons going on for people who, to get it in their, I mean, it was helpful to me, what 25,000 is versus 50, because 50 is really out of scale with the Coroner's community.
And I think that also, that that 50 was originally in there in hopes that the Coroner's community would one day get a large grocery store, and I think that today, that's probably even less likely than it was.
Sure.
I think in the mid-2000s, there was a proposal for Publix at some point, now with the Walmarts, with the Harris Teeter...
At Mark Farm, that, that property, if they say, that's where the proposal's on, that 14 years.
So that, that seems much less likely, and I believe that's another thing that contributed to the committee, seeing this is not necessary, and introducing buildings that are out of scale with the community.
I think the other thing too, Rob, if I may, is that the notion, for as long as I've worked on that committee, and it's been various iterations for like 20 years, is that the idea was to have not only, not any or as few as possible of chain stores, but to have the opportunity to have smaller, like lots of small mom and pops, you know, 10,000 square feet, rather than a humongous 50,000 square feet. So I think in terms of economic development, the 25 makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Just for point of knowledge, where else in the county do you allow 50,000 square foot buildings similar to what you're, we're not, that we're voting against now?
Well, we have two other, this district is similar in many ways to the T4 Hamlet Center Open District and T4 Hamlet Center. I think the T4 Hamlet Center Open allows up to 50,000 square feet, with the idea that, and it's still, it's a transect zone, but it would allow, if you wanted to integrate a grocery... a grocery store into a more walkable community, it would allow that size of store to be built. So other areas, that may be appropriate, but the Corners community does not want to have buildings of that scale.
Yeah.
So.
All right, can I hear a motion to accept the amendment as proposed?
Sure, I'll make that motion, to support the staff recommendation that the text amendment to the CDC, table 3.1.60, to amend the maximum building size for general retail for the T4 Village Center District on St. Helens Island. And I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Raise your hand. No dissents, with unanimous approval? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for both what, both what you're doing. Great job.
Yeah, I mean, that's a culmination of many years of work and listening.
We fired some stuff at you today, both in the second, in here.
Even without Juliana, you did well.
Yeah.
But we miss her. We miss her.
Oh, without a doubt, without a doubt.
No, she's leaving.
She's leaving?
I'm sorry, you didn't hear this?
No.
No, she's leaving at the end of month. She's going to work at Spring Island.
The development or the planning?
As a what?
As a, I think the master, master natural.
Oh, okay. Oh, good for her.
All right. We're still in the public meeting. Folks, for a second.
Thank you.
I guess we're at the point of other comments or any particular comments that I have to offer. I'll give anybody a chance if they have any comments that they would like to offer before we close the meeting. No? All right, I'll just make one comment. We had a, in our workshop, we had a very good discussion about bringing up old business. I think the standard is that old business is certainly allowed, being defined as items that were previously on our agenda, somewhere in our archives or files, and the advance notice given to myself, the chairman, to bring up an old issue, so that I can advise staff to properly prepare all of us to have a good discussion about it when it's brought up before the planning commission. If not in a public forum, the issue may not be, well, in a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, and certainly in a workshop, such as we talked about the trees. That might be one that we do in a workshop, to clarify our suggestions and ideas, if you have any to bring forward, and those are certainly welcome. Any new business is welcome as well, but again, the same process of bringing it through myself and the planning staff to adequately prepare for it. Okay. That being said, there are no further comments? There are no objections, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.